Well, hi, everybody. Welcome to the rescheduled regular meeting of the Placerville City Council for Wednesday, November 12th, 2025, if you would all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. Well, thank you very much. All right. Would you call? Let's see, I've called order, I've done the pledge. Would you do the roll call, please?
Councilmember Carter?
Here.
Mayor Clarici?
Here.
Vice Mayor Gottberg?
Here.
Councilmember No?
Here.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Here.
All righty, thank you very much. We have no ceremonial matters. Close session report.
Thank you, Mayor Clarici. The council did meet in closed session on one item. There was no public comment in advance. The council provided direction to staff.
Great, thank you. We have an adoption of an agenda. Does anybody wish to pull anything or make hay with our agenda up here? All right, would anybody from the public wish to comment on our agenda? All right. Would someone like to adopt our agenda, please?
I'll move, we adopt the agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Agreed. All righty. Announcements, presentations to the public. Brief comments by the city council. I will start over here.
Saturday, November 1st, I participated in the Trail Work Day with Community Pride behind the Mosquito Outfitters, and that was a great day.
Good, great, all right.
Fun stuff.
I have none tonight.
Okay, over there.
I have none for tonight.
I have a couple.
Okay.
Wanted to recognize, my son's a Marine, so I wanted to recognize the Marine Corps birthday on the tent, so happy birthday to the Marines out there.
Yes.
Also, I attended the Veterans Day ceremony yesterday, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
It was a great event, as always, and John, you did a great job, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
And I also had the opportunity to tour the Geysers geothermal plant south of Clear Lake, which was a really interesting tour.
Isn't it, though?
It's really awesome.
Yes.
Yeah, very cool, very cool. That was a great, and it's, yeah, really amazing how they make electricity from steam come out of the ground. It was great.
Yep. I actually, I actually took, I did that tour like a million years ago when I was working for DWR, any, well, under contract. Okay. I went to the same Veterans Celebration yesterday, and it was wonderful. The facility that has been made by the good people of this county is incredible. Everyone should go up there and look around. It's quite something, as always, the, it was moving and inspirational, and it was an honor to represent the city of Placerville at that event. Before, I guess one, I guess some reminders, because I didn't actually look at my calendar, but we don't meet again until after the Christmas parade.
December 9th.
Yes. And that's after the, and that, is that, yeah, it is after, okay. So I want to remind everybody that the day after Thanksgiving is, of course, the tree lighting extravaganza, which I will be part of. So if you don't get too tired of listening to me talk up here, you can go to the tree lighting and listen to me talk there, too. Wow. Anyway, so there's that, and I'll tell you, the group that's working on this, and Dennis has been part of it, staff has been part of it, doing a great job, and we have some wonderful volunteers, I think it's going to be a lot of fun. And then also, because I don't think we get around, don't forget the Christmas parade the next week, the next two Sundays after that, I guess, and we will be there as well. So always a good time and always a lot of fun. So those are the things that I would like to comment on. All right. Do we have any public comment on our comments? Okay, thank you. Next is our consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. The reading of the full text of all resolutions and ordinances will be waived unless a council member requests otherwise. So do we have anybody wishing to remove anything or have any questions up here about our consent calendar? We do not. Would the public wish to comment on our consent calendar?
Sue Rodman, resident of Placerville. Good afternoon. I'd like to comment on 7.6 for the, for the Smith Flat Road and the Smith Flat Road project. I am really glad to see that we got it done before the storms hit, because it was in sad shape and it really needed what we did to it. And it sure enough turned out to be another Placerville project with all sorts of surprises under the ground that made it more expensive, and it happens so regularly, you know, it's just like, whatever you do and it's going to open up the ground, you're going to have something. So I'm glad to see, I'm glad that we have great engineers and a great contractor to work with to get this buttoned up.
Agreed, and thank you very much, Sue. Okay. Anybody else wish to comment on the consent calendar? Seeing no more comments, we'll bring it back up here. Do I have a motion and a second for the consent calendar?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Oh, sorry.
We tie?
Okay, the motion to my left.
I'll second.
Second to my right, okay. We have a motion and second, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gottberg?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Public comment, non-agenda items, I repeat, non-agenda items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. State law prohibits the council from acting on items not listed on the agenda except by special action of the city council under specified circumstances. The mayor reserves the right to limit speakers to three minutes, which I will, except for one person. You are not allowed, and it's not like a sweepstakes or anything, I know the person. Like, you get three, anyway, you are not, okay. And follow the golden rule, be nice, be civil, show some grace out there, but say what you need to say. So I am opening this up for oral, it says oral communications, so have at it, please.
Good evening, my name is Jackie Ledbetter. I'm new to the city. I've lived in Placerville for 25 years, but outside of the city limits. Getting old, the ranch life got a little hard, so I came to move into the city so that I can retire and play with the grandkids. Picked out a beautiful house on Constellation and Clay. It's just gorgeous. And the reason I chose the house is because you folks put in three stop signs to try to keep things calm with Apple Hill. I'm not even going to do my agenda because Chief Joe said, stay calm. I'm going to take a deep breath and stay calm. I'm from the Department of Corrections. I retired after 25 years, pretty good at taking logs and data, and my bathroom window looks at those three stop signs. And things started happening, and I got Ring cameras and I put them up, and I started taking logs of the crime, not just speeding, the accidents. And then the perfect storm hit when Constellation populated. More people coming down this way, wonderful neighbors, babies, professionals. You've got a great neighborhood happening up there. I'm worried, I'm worried for the children, I'm worried for the families, I'm worried for me. I have a CCW, and I can't tell you how many times I've considered, I've said, no, we're in a city, I can't do that. I know what I should do and what I shouldn't do. I'm way off my agenda. But the perfect storm happened when those houses went in, the apartments went from one to two-car families to three to four-car families. I have to do a shout-out, and I believe, Melissa, it's one of your employees, Wes, yes, when I moved in, I was very upset, rode my bike down there, took my helmet, and I said, I've got a F-250, or Dodge Diesel 250, and I can't get out of my driveway because everybody parked where they used, where it used to be barriers and they would park there, and I couldn't get out. So I had to sell the car, and I had to buy a smaller car. Wes worked with me to get the signage up. He worked with all of you to get the enforcement going to make sure parking was good. Things were great for a little while, and then my logs started getting pretty serious. I became a victim. I had a homeless man masturbating in my driveway. I don't want to see that. So I called, and somebody else called, and somebody responded, and it was taken care of. A lot of things have happened, two side swipes right on my road where they park, trusses are trying to come in for the building, they can't because they're parked in the crosswalks. You know, on a normal basis, it's, is that me, I'm done?
I am feeling particularly generous, and I will give you one more minute.
Thank you, my friend.
Yes.
So of these logs I've taken, it's all based factual cameras on my part, which is not acceptable by the police department. You have your own factual way of showing these crimes. I have a laundry list of crimes that have happened. My friends in the neighborhood are victims, and now some are victims of violent crime. My camera showed the vehicle that went through the house. You hear them try to speed away, go across the street and hit the other house. We responded before the police department got there, and we're screaming in the house, are you in there? Are you alive? Are you okay? Scary. I don't need, I mean, we need to work together, whether it's speed bumps, cameras, I know money's limited. I don't know what the answer is, I'd love to work with you folks to figure out the answer, but somebody's going to get hurt badly, and they've already been victimized. It's not fair to be a victim to your own home. This is a lovely town, I like living here, but something has to change, and I appreciate the extra minute, sir.
It's, it's almost Christmas. Anyway, well, thank you very much for your comments, and we do take these things seriously, so thank you very much.
I appreciate it, thank you.
All right, anybody else wish to comment?
Well, I was here about two and a half years ago, talked to Mr. Morris, which I understand he's gone.
Yes.
I've had plenty of emails with that person. It's about 3113 Clark Street, which is right next to the Rotary Park. The chief knows all about it, he's had many people come out there to take care of the situation. Well, I had, you guys had a city council there, the house is abandoned, you guys red-tagged the house and everything, the house is abandoned. There was a city worker there just recently, and he was boarding up the house, and I asked him, what's, what's the use of boarding up the house? I mean, it's already boarded up. He said, well, the city owns it now. So my, my, I guess my question is, does the city actually own that house now, or does Charlie Lance still own the house? Because it's still on Zillow for sale for $319,000. I know that's far-fetched, I know that there's been probably five to seven contractors have put bids into that house, and they've been all denied because nobody's going to pay $319 for that house, guaranteed, nobody is, especially when the Zillow ad says deemed for demolished. Nobody's going to pay $319 for a deemed to demolished house. So I just wanted to know, so the, the neighborhood, because everybody, I mean, there's no sign-up from the real estate agent, and the real estate agent's out of Walnut Creek, but everybody I've talked to that's been a contractor there, that's bid a bid on the house, they said they've been denied. Well, I'm sure they're only doing $100,000, $150,000, they're just doing what they think that they can make money off of. So my question is, is it, you guys own the house now, or you guys are in process? I, I understand the receivership, me and Cleve's been, for the last two and a half years, going through the whole receivership way this all works, and it takes time. Well, it's been two and a half years, and I feel like it's time.
All right. We, we, we don't get into a dialogue. If you're done with your comments, I'll ask if it's been ours or not, and then we'll go from there. Okay, so are you done with your comments?
Um, yeah, basically, if it is your guys' house, maybe should get a hold of a real estate agent, have them take down the sign, because people come there on a, almost a daily basis to look at the house.
Of course, yeah.
You know, so not saying that they're, they're derelicts or they're homeless people, they're contractors, they're always, and I, and I go out there to confront them and give them the whole story of the house that me and Mr. Morris have talked about, and the police chief, we've, we've cleaned up the house two and a half years ago, part of it. So I mean, I was just, maybe if it is yours, contact the real estate agent, have them take it down, and then you guys proceed to what you need, guys need to do to, to fence it off or do whatever, put notifications saying it's yours.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Our new city manager, Mr. Warren, will talk to you about it and let you, and give you updates on all that information.
Perfect.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anyone else wish to comment? Okay.
I know you, thank you, before I start speaking, you were going to give me some extra time.
Yes.
Am I going to go by that clock, or I can?
You know what, we'll, we'll just wind it now, we'll use this one.
Okay.
And then we'll just turn it back on again, I guess.
All right, I'll press this. Before I start, Clark Street, 55, 60 years ago, I was the newspaper kid for that.
Ah.
I had a route from all the way bottom of Golden River all the way up Rotary Park and back. I used to get up at 4:30 in the Sunday morning and deliver all the papers up there. Well, thank you for letting me speak to you today. The occasion that I'm here to talk about is Armistice Day, our Veterans Day in the present time, and I've given you a handout of three distinguished World War I veterans I want to talk about on behalf of a new service organization called Eldorado County Valor. And one of the, the front page of your handout is a fact sheet about that organization. It's a service organization dedicated to all of the veterans of Eldorado County who have distinguished themselves through acts of valor and service to the United States. We do that through ongoing research to identify who those veterans are, document those veterans' services, and be advocates for their collective memorialization so that we can recognize them all in one place together. So I want to talk about three of them that I've come across in this research. These are three of about 170 people that have been identified so far as Valor recipients in this county, which is pretty remarkable. In World War I, Reuben Levy was a merchant in Main Street. He ran the Eldorado cigar factory, and he sold that just before the draft for World War I. He was one of three people that were selected by the local draft board to go up to Washington and Camp Lewis. And when he did so, he was noted for his leadership right off the bat. At Camp Lewis, while they trained there for about a year or so approximately, he was promoted from private to sergeant. And so he was a sergeant when they all departed to go to France and begin their training to enter combat in World War I. And as a member of the 91st Division, their first day of combat was December, September 26, 1918, in the Meuse-Sargonne Offensive. On that very first day, he was so conspicuous in his courage that he was personally cited along with one other soldier for highly courageous and efficient performance of duty under fire. Not only was he highly courageous, but so conspicuous that they gave him a field promotion to First Sergeant, they recommended him for the Distinguished Service Cross, our nation's second highest military decoration, which was new to World War I, and they recommended him for Officer Candidate School, and he got pulled off the line and sent to Army Candidate School and was commissioned as a Second Lieutenant. The war was over by the time he finished Army Candidate School, but he still went back to the 91st Division, he was with the 363rd Infantry, and he was in command of a troop there. And then after the war, he came back to Placerville, where he was drafted in, and moved to La Mesa after that and ran a hardware store with his parents, and had a very distinguished service down in La Mesa as well. And there's a facility there in their water district that's named after him, and has, that's because he served with them for over 30 years. I don't know if that beep was me, if I'm out of time or not.
No, continue.
Okay.
I'm going to give you three runs of the clock, that's nine minutes, you've got another, it's almost five and a half minutes.
Okay, it won't be long as long, I promise.
There you go.
The second is Master Sergeant Thomas J. Fink. He is incredibly distinguished for heroism and for being at the head of a parade in Paris on July 4, 1917. He joined the Army in 1893 from Tennessee, and he served all the way until 1921, and when he retired, he was a Master Sergeant. And in all the places that he had been in the world, which included Cuba, the Philippines, Mexico, France, of course, in World War I, he decided to make Placerville his home. So he moved here in 1921, and the Placerville Mountain Democrat ran a story that says Placerville has war hero, and they gave a great accounting of all the places that he'd been and the medals that he had won and so on. On the second page of that handout, you'll see two pictures of him. One is him holding the regimental colors, he's on the right there with the mustache, he was quite an older guy at the time, and he led a parade of a battalion of the 16th Infantry through Paris on July 14, or July 4, 1917, to celebrate the bond of alliance between France and the United States that went back to the American Revolution. And General Pershing was there to lead the American troops and before they began fighting with the American Expeditionary Forces. The picture below that, you see him cited for heroism, he's receiving a decoration for gallantry, which is basically the equivalent of a Silver Star Medal in today's militaria. And he received two of those decorations in World War I. And again, he came to Placerville of all the places and lived here, and then lived in California the rest of his life until he passed away in 1945, and he's buried at Golden Gate National Cemetery. The last veteran I want to talk about is a very distinguished Marine and Army veteran. He's buried in Georgetown at the Pioneer Cemetery. His name is Nicholas Marunich. He was a Croatian immigrant who came here in 1905, landed in Baltimore after transiting the ocean, and he ended up in the Illinois area, and in 1912, he joined the Army and was sent to Nebraska, and from Nebraska, his Army troop went to Veracruz, Mexico, when that city was occupied by the United States for a period. And then after three years, he was discharged and decided that he wasn't done with military service, so he joined the Marine Corps about a month later, and he served in the Marine Corps in France in World War I. There's an incredible story on the second page of that document called "The Lucky Flag." He carried a flag with him through all the battles that he was involved in. He was wounded and cited twice for gallantry as well, just like Master Sergeant Fink. After his service, he was, lived primarily in Concord, but he came to Greenwood and made Eldorado County his permanent residence in 1947, and he passed away in 1973 and is buried in Georgetown. He's distinguished because he was a well-known mason, and if you're around looking at historical documents and plaques in Greenwood or in Pilot Hill, those two large stone monuments that hold those plaques were built by him in the 1950s, and he did a number of other works as well. That's just a summary of what is over a century of valorous service by our county's veterans. As I said, I've got names of about 170 that are being researched and documented like this, and I wanted you to be aware of them, they are the first public forum for Eldorado County Valor to make this known, and we would appreciate your support, and we hope to talk to you again in the future.
Well, thank you very much. That's fascinating and, and quite inspirational and interesting, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you for the extra time, I appreciate it.
Of course, of course. All right, do we have anybody else that wishes to comment this after, this evening? All right, thank you. Seeing no one else, we will bring it back up here. Do we have any written communication?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're done with our public comment period. We had no items pulled from the consent calendar, we have no ordinances, we have no public hearings. We have some discussion items. And so the first one, 12.1, consider approving a $40,000 budget appropriation from the Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Account unassigned fund balance and a construction, and a construction contract with C.E. Cox General Engineering, Inc., in the amount of $31,818 for the sidewalk repairs project for Bedford Avenue curb ramp and Main Street sidewalk and finding the project exempt from SEQA Ms. Savage.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. The item before you this evening proposes to create a new project and award a construction contract to address two sidewalk repair locations. On July 5, 2022, the city received an Americans with Disability Act grievance from a resident concerning the lack of an ADA compliant curb ramp on the west side of the crosswalk on Bedford Avenue. It is at the location where the US-50 pedestrian overcrossing sidewalk ramps down to meet Bedford Avenue. At that time, the sidewalk was not believed to be located in the city's street right-of-way. On October 7, 2025, the city received a follow-up from the resident asking for the status of this matter. Staff investigated further and determined that, from a record of survey, the location of the sidewalk without a curb ramp is in fact located in the city's street right-of-way. Staff began performing an in-house engineering design evaluation of a proposed curb ramp. At 459 Main Street, the root system of a city's street tree has been heaving the adjacent sidewalk and curb and gutter. The tree has been removed, but the Public Works Department has received multiple complaints about the tripping hazard in the sidewalk. After performing a review of the conditions, it was agreed that the curb gutter and sidewalk would need to be replaced. This type of concrete repair is beyond the ability and workload of the Public Works Department, and so staff is requesting to contract this work combined with the new curb ramp on Bedford Avenue. Staff met with the contractor, C.E. Cox General Engineering, in the field and discussed the proposed scope of work for both projects. The contractor provided a bid, and the final negotiated cost for the improvements is $31,818 with $21,500 for the Bedford Avenue work and $10,318 for the Main Street work. The project is categorically exempt under SEQA Guideline Section 15301 subdivision C, existing streets and sidewalk. A notice of exemption was filed at the Recorder's Office on November 4, 2025. It is important to note that the location of the proposed Bedford Avenue curb ramp, there are existing constraints that prohibit the curb ramp from being completely ADA compliant according to current standards. The Engineering Department is proposing a design that will create a curb ramp, but the ramp can only be three feet wide, which is the existing sidewalk width. Widening the ramp to four feet is cost prohibitive due to private property impacts and an adjacent retaining wall. Staff met with the individual who filed the ADA grievance at the site on October 20 to review the proposed curb ramp design, and he was satisfied with the narrow sidewalk width. He expressed gratitude to the Engineering Department for reviewing and addressing his concerns. Staff is recommending approval of a construction contract with C.E. Cox General Engineering, and if approved, the work will commence immediately. That concludes my verbal report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions on this item? We do not have any questions so far up here. Would the public wish to comment on item 12.1?
Sue Rodman, and I have tripped several times, and so I'm really glad to see these come under repairs, so. And three feet, the difference between three and four feet is only this much. So if three feet works, that's fine.
Thank you very much, Sue. I mean, the difference between three and four is 25%, that is a lot, you know, but as long as the person thinks, thinks it's okay. Does anybody else have any comments?
Well, if you've got a retaining wall and other things that are giving you problems, then it's a good compromise.
I agree. Thank you very much, Sue. Anybody else wish to comment on this item? Okay, no, we'll bring it back up here. Are there any other comments, questions on this? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gottberg?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye. Thank you. Item 12.2, provide general direction to staff on the city's level of engagement for the celebration of Independence Day and the nation's 250th anniversary, or its semi-quinsentennial.
Impressive.
Yeah, somebody found that out for me. I did the sesquicentennial for gold discovery, and that was more than I wanted. Occurring on July 4, 2026, Mr. Nishihara, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, city council members. Before you tonight is a staff report requesting some feedback in regards to the level of participation for the city and what role we would like to participate in the 250-year anniversary of America. There are some options in regards to the discussion, as outlined in my staff report, to assume a leading role, which of course, we all know Dennis loves events, so why not, right? Confetti and a lever, let's do it.
Confetti grenades.
Secondly, to pursue a cosponsorship role and recruit some partnerships. This is very similar to many of the events that we host throughout our city, especially downtown. Third, to offer supplementary support, perhaps finding a local organization or someone to participate with or maintain a status quo kind of level, and perhaps just do some minimal stuff throughout or provide an alternate plan. I have had a few minor conversations, primarily with merchants on Main, and, and I quote, they approve this message, they would definitely like to be involved, should the city participate and do some things. But with that said, you have my staff report, and I'm available for questions and feedback, if you have any.
All right, do we have any questions and/or feedback? I, I do want to say I did receive I do want to say I did receive an email, a text from a citizen about this very, about a couple, several months ago now, and I texted him back and said, "Well, you put a committee together and organize it, and we are happy to potentially support anything that might come organically from our community." And I know Councilmember Carter had mentioned it as well. So, with that as framework, do we have any questions or comments?
I have comments, but I'm happy to listen to the public first.
Yeah, same.
I'll just, I'll add a comment on that front. Similarly, I think we've spent a lot of time and resources in developing a policy and process and had lots of discussion about that for events. And if there's people in the community who want to apply for a permit application to have a Fourth of July event, I am like more than happy to look at the proposal that the community is putting forth and applying to the city for.
Yes. Great. All right. Do we have any public comment on this item? This is, you have three minutes now.
Yes, I know. Thank you. Probably less, right? You could take it away. I'm glad I stuck around because I just want to offer a point of appreciation for that idea. I'm a graduate of Ponderosa, class of '76, and when we graduated then, we wore red, white, and blue tassels with a liberty bell on our caps. Seems like it was just yesterday. But, you know, having grown up here and especially doing all this research and looking through the Mountain Democrat Archives and the Historical Society Archives, Placerville particularly has a great history of celebrating events like this throughout its history. There's numerous pictures and stories that are available, and I hope that that's something that this can just be a continuation of that tradition of. For example, going back to the celebrations of Armistice Day in the beginning, they used to ring the bell tower bell at 11, 11, 11 times. I don't know if they do that any longer, but that's something that I came across, and as a veteran myself, I did 25 years in the Coast Guard, that was something that stood out to me, you know? The bell tower has always been a central symbol of this city, and at that time and on that date, that celebration meant a lot to the citizens here for a very long time. And being around as a nation for 250 years, I think bears the same kind of observation. I hope it can happen.
Thank you.
Kirk Smith. Fourth of July has always been my favorite holiday, and it stems back from the days when I made rockets and used the leftover fuel to make fireworks. I don't do anymore.
That's illegal, folks. Don't do that. Okay.
Actually, it wasn't quite too kosher then. But what are you gonna do when you have 20 pounds of zinc dust and sulfur leftover? The concern I have about this that brings a lot of trepidations is that most historians realize that we're now in the most divisive period we've had since the Civil War. And it's unfortunate, but that's reality. And that's why I like the idea of veterans groups and historical groups being involved because that's the kind of way to avoid that kind of partisanship that's so easy to do around this kind of event. I've seen all kinds of old photographs, and I used to post them about the Fourth of July from the past. And just as was described about Armistice Day, there were large parades downtown. And those are the kind of things I'd like to see brought back. So, reaching out to various historical groups would be one way to make sure that's done in a fashion that's consistent with the history of the event and the history of the town. So, those are the suggestions. I'm not sure they'd be willing to come forward unless there's some solicitation, but that's just an idea.
Well, thank you, Kirk. Anyone else wish to comment? All right, let's bring it back up here. Comments?
Okay, well.
Ideas?
Yeah, well, I initially thought it would be great to decorate the bell tower, and I believe Dave said that Wendy Thomas was interested in helping, and I know in the past, she has just done a fantastic job of decorating Main Street for these sort of events. So, if we could reach out to her and help with that, I'd like to see us at the very least do that. I thought it would be fun to do like reenactments. We could do maybe Revolutionary War reenactments down at the City Park. I know the parade is out there, but you have a lot of triple-digit weather in July, and I'm not really sure how the parade's gonna go over. I mean, I'm willing to be flexible, but I thought, you know, we could maybe do more smaller scale, like, you know, something in Town Hall and something at Arts and Culture El Dorado and everybody who wants to do something, maybe something at Gold Bug Park and have different smaller events going on all around town. Might be more practical where people can get indoors and, but still walk Main Street and see all the celebration. It's kind of what I had in mind. I think there's a lot of groups that we could engage, and Dennis could be a point person too, because he's gonna need to know anyways what's going on around town. But to try to, you know, maybe as someone brought out, kind of put out, put that out to different groups, how they'd like to help and what they could come up with to add to the celebration. What are my thoughts?
There's definitely, I mean, there's definitely a lot of community interest in this event, but it's been difficult to find anybody that's willing to take the leap and, you know, take on the full responsibility for the event. And so, you know, with that in mind, I agree with Nicole that, you know, if we can find somebody that's willing to take this on, then we can at a later date, you know, figure out if the city wants to help out in any way. But in the meantime, I definitely want to, you know, continue the conversation, try and find somebody that's willing to take a leading role in this and run with it. And I, you know, public comment was great also about, you know, keeping it non-confrontational, non, anyway, obviously. But yeah, that's my, that's my thought is that, you know, let's continue to try and find somebody to take this project on, and then when that time comes, we can talk about whether we want to co-sponsor it or however, handle from there.
Okay. Now, that, yeah, I, we had a meeting for the tree lighting ceremony today, and we were the couple folks, or at least one person from the MOMA, whatever, the downtown merchants thing. And I have a feeling if we can get someone like that, and he seemed interested, we do have an issue of there's, they're going to do something around the wagon train again, and that's in the beginning of June, then we would have something on the heels of that almost exactly a month later. Just things logistically and then staff time to think about. You know, I think if we, I think if we can grab like the gentleman from the merchants group and some folks, I think we can put together a crew that will do what you were suggesting. I like, it was funny, we even actually talked a little bit about it today, the idea of having some things in town that would, we could sort of support and get into the public square and make people aware of that would feed. Because, you know, at the end of the day, the fairgrounds has their fireworks displays, so you'd want to kind of have things in town here and then sort of funnel people down, down Placerville Drive out to the fairgrounds, which obviously can hold lots of people and we could have a thing. So, just have to kind of work with the folks that are there, and I'll talk to Alan some more about it and see what he says. And, I mean, I can't commit to anything, but, because I won't. But I'll see if I can maybe organize some folks around this idea to get this going and then come back from there. And speaking to our plan, because we have a process, the one thing we can do though, because it's likely that this may come together in a fashion that will not feed into the strict scheduling we have in our permitting, to find some leeway in order to allow people to put something together, maybe in a, you know, more condensed timeframe. So, I think it's a great idea, especially now that we have the word, and I'm not going to say it again, to call it. So, anyway, thank you very much, Dennis. Did all this sort of chatter give you an idea? Besides, we'll wait and see what happens next.
I think one of, one of the big things that we definitely want to keep in mind to, as much effort as we put into finding other organizations to support us, there is a, there's a time constraint in regards to the level of resources that we currently already have.
Right.
And so, finding opportunities for us to combine existing events, whether it's smaller in different areas, whether it's indoors or whether it's outdoors, there's gonna be a sense of coordination from the city's part, whether we're issuing the permit or supporting them with insurance. I think the general consensus that I feel the city council is providing is that we want to be able to support it, but uncertain, in not so many words, we really don't understand the depth of what type of event. And so, I think we have, staff has enough information to kind of try to put together a little bit of a sense of what the plan's gonna be. I'm not sure if we should bring some of that back, or do you want us to just kind of hold it? And I'm, I'm speak very frankly.
Sure.
I've been planning Christmas, that is on December, on November 28th, since December of last year. And that budget started at $10,000 and it's at $15,000, and we just raised $15,000.
Right.
And so, at this point right now, understanding the gamut of where we are with the amount of thousands of people who are coming for the parade and the amount of man efforts from police and from fire and from public works, I jokingly say Nick, because I call him four times a day. But the reality is, there's gonna be, regardless of whatever we do, I want some clear understanding of the level of investment, that time and effort and money that staff's gonna have to put into it, regardless of if it's at a shallow level or at a deep level.
Okay. No, no, that makes perfect sense, and it's something that I've talked about with folks. We talked about it when we did our agenda review on Monday. And so, I think that's why we need to get into the community fairly quickly and say, "Hey, listen." And, and, and really, and really put it out there, because I think what happens is this, it's a great idea, everybody loves the idea. And it's not to say that people just leave it on our doorstep. They'll do something, but if they don't kind of understand our parameters, even if they're right now pretty fuzzy, it'll just come back. It'll come back as some weird thing and, or something that is really gonna be more complicated than we need it to be. And, you know, it's funny, because I know, I've seen all the pictures of the parades and stuff, and when I first started coming to this town almost 50 years ago now, I think it was a lot easier to put on a parade, because I think there were an awful lot of assets sitting out there that said, "Hey, we're gonna have a parade," and the Judge Roy B. Club would show up and the mountain man and the clampers, and you could cobble together a pretty first-class parade pretty quickly. And I just don't think that happens anymore. I think that those, A, that most of those outfits don't even exist, well, the clampers still exist, but, but a lot of those places don't even exist anymore. And so, you just struggle with that, you know? We all have this nostalgia. I graduated the next year, but we had nothing on our, from high school, and we had nothing on ours. And so, I think we need to get back like to the merchants and say, "Okay, we talked about it, and you guys, let's come up with a plan, and it can't be too complicated, and, you know, we're willing to maybe decorate the bell tower and do some stuff visually, but we need to organize something fairly quickly that we can then sort of assess and then say, 'Yeah, no, or maybe.'" Okay. Is that reasonable?
Yeah, I think that's the case of it, and I don't want to sound like it's a joke, but if everybody's in charge, then nobody is.
Oh, of course. Oh, yeah.
We just need to be able to identify who the lead is and work with them. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, we have some comments.
Well, I think ideas are a dime a dozen.
Well, yeah.
And I think we, as a council, should initiate some conversations and bring it forward, not just say, "We want, oh, I hope someone will step up and volunteer this great idea we have." I think we need to make some calls, we need to make some contacts.
Well, sure, yes, yes.
And we need to help staff, because he is very busy doing, running the city, and if this is something we want, I think we need to help step up and help reach out to the community also.
Right. Well, and that's what, that's what I was planning to do.
Yeah, yeah. I'm making a list of people I'm gonna talk to and try to send that, Dennis, his way, and I think everyone up here needs to help with that.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I see it as, you know, the city would play a supporting role, but unless there is somebody in the community that wants to step up and lead it, like, that's really a necessity. Like, I don't want us to be the event planners.
Oh, God, no.
So, so that's, just for clarity, I think, you know, Dennis was looking for some clarity, I'm trying to, where my perspective is on that. And I think, I do like the idea, I think of something that doesn't involve a Main Street closure, but, you know, stuff at the bell tower, stuff at the park, you know, we could utilize this space, but, but things that are not necessarily like closed down the street and everything that comes with a closing of the street.
Well, why don't we commit to making some phone calls in the next little bit, and then we'll come back with some ideas and see what happens there.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes, you may.
Perhaps we could consider bringing back an item, kind of a status update of where we're at with the event, maybe like the second meeting in January, just to check.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We better have something pretty well thought out by then.
And how we want to move forward.
Okay. Yeah, that would be fine. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. Thanks for the comments. Item 12.3. Consider approving a professional services contract with Placeworks to update the city's open space and conservation element of the city's general plan in the amount of $34,969, authorizing the city manager to execute the same, and approving $37,000 budget appropriation from the 19, wow, '93 STBG 690 grant fund unassigned fund balance for the said project. 1993, we're digging deep. Ms. Kendrick.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Carol Kendrick, Director of Development Services, presenting this item. This item recommends approving a professional contract with Placeworks for approximately $35,000 to update our general plan's open space and conservation element, authorizing the city manager to execute it and approving the $37,000 budget appropriation. This aligns with our strategic plan to maintain and update our planning documents. As a background, state laws, Assembly Bill 1889 and Senate Bill 1425 require these updates. AB 1889, the Room to Rome Act mandates analyzing wildlife connectivity in the conservation element to be completed by January 1st, 2028. Senate Bill 1425 requires a full open space element review by January 1st, 2026, focusing on equitable access, climate resistance, rewilding, and consultations with tribes and CDFW. To comply, we issued a request for proposal on August 25th, 2025, and we received two proposals by the deadline of September 25th from Placeworks in Folsom and DUDAC in Encinitas. After evaluation and interviews, we recommend Placeworks. They're 100% employee-owned firm with over 140 staff and six California offices, including nearby Folsom. Their team, led by Principal Advisor Mark Teague with 35-plus years' experience, and Project Manager Jose Ayala, who has completed over 150 general plans statewide. Their approach is streamlined, budget conscientious, using existing data like our general plan and the 2023 Wildlife Corps study includes minimal required outreach, CEQA compliance, and user-friendly deliverables, all for $34,969, not to exceed. DUDAC offered strong expertise but at a much higher cost of $228,755 with a more expansive scope that needed for this compliance-focused project. Placeworks provides the best value, lowest cost, and proven efficiency for small cities, local presence for communication and solid references. The $37,000 appropriation covers the contract plus $2,000 in staff time funded from the specified grant fund balance. This action is CEQA exempt under Section 1506-1B3, and its planning work with no environmental impact, CEQA review will occur during the general plan open space element update. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. This is one of those interesting situations. One thing, I gotta talk to my buddies at DUDAC and ask them what was going on. Anyway, this is one of those interesting things, because as you see here, there's like rewilding and stuff like that, and this is obviously something where they don't think about places where, I mean, certainly if deer are any indication, we are wilder than we need to be, because every day when I walk out the door, there's a whole family of Bambi's sitting there looking at me. Do we have any question comments about this? It all seems fairly straightforward, plus we have to do it, so we have to do it. Are there any comments from the public on this item?
Sue Rodman, Placerville. This looks like another mandate from the state. And so, the lowest cost to get it done is probably the best way to go. And I agree with you. I have Bambi's and squirrels and...
All creatures, all creatures, great and small.
So, my place already has wildlife, so.
And not to dig too deeply at our good friends at the state in Sacramento, there are lots of places in the state where you have much more urbanization, and these things are really important. Connecting habitats and stuff is actually an important thing, obviously here, they get along just fine. So, anyway, thank you, Sue. Anyone else wish to comment? All right, thank, we'll bring it back up here. Any comments, questions? Like I said, it seems pretty straightforward. I will entertain a motion.
I'll move staff's recommendation.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gotberg?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye. I'm sensing the excitement that we're getting through here pretty quick, I can tell. None of these people out here should ever play poker. Anyway, okay. You know, this is my, like, not necessarily second to last meeting, but maybe third, second to last, third to last meeting? I am a little chatty tonight, and I want to apologize for that, but hey, who cares? Okay, thank you very much for that. Council reports from other agencies. Eldorado County Transit Authority.
Yeah, we did meet. We received and filed the Fiscal Year 2024-25 Administration Operations Report. We also moved and approved a reclassification of Dispatch Supervisor to Transit Operations Supervisor, proposed a revised allocation table and organizational chart, and approved the proposed revised job description for such position.
Cool. Wow, that's a lot. Eldorado County Transportation Commission?
Yes, we held three public hearings, one for the 2026 Regional Transportation Improvement Plan, second for the EIR for the Eldorado County Regional Transportation Plan 2025 to 45, and the third one for the Eldorado County Regional Transportation Plan 2025 to 2045, and approved said plans.
Yes. Just as, if you want to know what's going on, sort of as big-picture transportation, the two documents, not so much the EIR, but the two documents that were just mentioned are really good. You can go to the EDCTC website, read up on them. You will find out everything there is to know about transportation of all kinds in those documents, and where the money's going and how it's being allocated. So, I strongly suggest, if you're interested, to go look at that stuff. LAFCO?
We did not meet.
All right. I should have this memorized by now, but I don't. SECOG? Oh, the Transportation Committee met. We didn't, we didn't do anything. All right. Pioneer, well, Pioneer Community Energy.
We did not meet.
Placerville Fire Safe?
We did meet for two items. One is the Fire Safe Council Event will be on May 2nd this year, so you can put that on the calendar, Midtown Mall again. And then, the council is looking for three new board members, so if there are any members of the public who are within the Placerville Fire Safe Council area, please contact David Zalinski, or you can reach out to me, either one is fine, and let us know that you're interested, because we'd like some new board members.
Yes. Opportunity Knox?
We did meet. We had an emergency meeting to add a, an additional winter shelter to the Tahoe Basin, so we have additional shelter up there for the winter.
Okay, very good. Does anybody wish to comment on the meetings we go to? All right, bring it back up here. Do we have any requests for future agenda items? I'm not hearing any. City Manager and Staff Reports, 15.1, receiving file October 2025, Fire Station 25 Run Report, "It's Really Busy."
End of report.
Okay. "It's Really Busy." Okay, that's it, huh? You can actually, I'm sorry, you could report if you want.
All I'll add to it is, as noted in the report, you'll see the crews participated in the Sugar Skull event again this year, and really extremely proud of the work that they did in Remember and Our fallen brothers.
Yes. That is very, yes. Excellent mustache there. Okay, great. Thank you. Development Services Department Monthly Statistics for October, Ms. Kendrick.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. We collected a total of $328,084 across building and planning services. This reflects a steady permit volume and aligns with the seasonal trends in Placerville. We completed 77 inspections and issued 58 building permits, notably the most for rerufts, and we received three temporary use permits in planning, supporting community events and short-term business activations, and one lot line adjustment facilitating efficient land use without subdivision. Staff recommends the city council receive and file this report. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do we have any questions? We will receive and file, thank you very much. Does any member of the public wish to comment on our reports? All right. We have item 16, upcoming items, you all know how to read, and you can read them. And if I don't hear anything else, we will adjourn this meeting. All righty, thank you very much for coming and staying, for that matter. All right.